The meeting of November 26th and 28th.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just ask for a point of personal privilege. This will be the floor. Supervisor Klein's last meeting with us, and I want to say, I want to thank him for eight years of good public service and that let him know that I have appreciated serving with him. When I came in, I looked to him for guidance. You know, I had some people, you know, we have some differences, but I think ninety-nine percent of the time, I think we're together, and I think the Darrell feels like I do. The citizens sent us in here to get the work done for Dubuque County, and I think we did that. Darrell, I want to wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
And I would echo those same sentiments. Dubuque County is in a better place for your service. If you look at the amount of things we've accomplished during your tenure, it's quite a long list. So, thank you for your service. We greatly appreciate it.
It's been a privilege. I'll miss some of it, not all of it.
All right. Thank you, Darrell. Okay, so we're on to the approval of the minutes of the meetings of November 26th and 28th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is consent items. I don't see any. Is that correct? All right. And number four is procurement procedures. Request for bids for the bullet trap for the shooting range. And so those bids, if anyone is interested in doing sealed bids for the bullet trap for the Dubuque County shooting range, those bids are due on Friday, December 28th at four o'clock, and they will be opened on January 2nd at nine o'clock. And so they're due in the auditor's office, which is just over here, at 4:00 p.m., Friday, December 28th.
The motion's approved.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public hearings. We have proof of publications. Do we have any? We do. No, we do not. Yeah, okay, there they are. Proof of publications for zoning amendment, public hearings.
I will make a motion to receive and file the proof of publications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we're on to our public hearings for the amendment of the zoning ordinances. First on our list is Ken and Ann Kress, R1 rural residential to R2 single-family residential. Tammy?
The applicants are requesting rezon from R1 rural residential to R2 single-family residential. Twenty-three point six-four acres, more or less.
Tammy, do you want to aim the, aim the mic at you also? Please, I can't hear you.
Well, she's got, I think it's that one right there. You hit the bottom one, it goes into automatic mode, I believe.
Ooh, that one all the way.
That one, right there. Nope, guess not. There's one of them that just turns off this bay. All right. That's...
Is that better?
Sure.
Okay. Will it work? Okay. All right. So, the applicants requesting rezon from R1 rural residential to R2 single-family residential, twenty-three point six-four acres, more or less, to build a single-family home and allow them to have shorter setbacks from the front of the property. Yeah, it's, it's on.
Yeah. Your best of, it's, we're having difficulty hearing you as well, but if you can, because it should amplify if you just get it directionally on you.
You got it there? Is that better?
Yes.
Can you hear it? Okay. All right. So, the property is located adjacent to the city of Dubuque along Cottingham Road, and it is legally described as lot one of the northeast of the southwest, section one, T-89, T-88 North, R1E, Vernon Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Ken and Ann Kress. Zoning in the area includes R1 rural residential to the north, the south, the east, and the west, R2 single-family residential to the south, C1 conservancy to the north, east, and west. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Eleven rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Dubuque was notified. Comprehensive plan, chapter 12, land use, page 179, objective 3.5, and page 180, objective 6.4, and chapter 9, agricultural natural resources, page 135, objective 5.1 may apply to this case. So, this is where we were just talking about the entrance. So, this is where they're wanting to place the home up in here, and because of the, the tree line here, the way it falls, that's why they're asking for the rezoning. It's zoned residential. It's just they're asking for less setbacks by going by the R2. And Ken has explained that they're not in any intention at this time to develop that land, that it's for their personal family use.
Well, if there's any other houses that want to go on, they'd have to come back here for more rezoning anyway, or...
No, they would not.
No, not for, if they stayed R1, it wouldn't have to.
Entrance.
Right.
Right. No matter what, even if it's R1 right now, other than the entrances, they could build this up. As you can see, here's the zoning in the area. It's all, and the, the yellow there is the city of Dubuque. This literally is adjacent to the city of Dubuque.
Landfill, correct?
Yes.
Which is jointly owned by the city and county.
Yeah.
Do you want to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing related to the zoning request. Would anyone like to speak related to the zoning request? Please go to the podium, state your name and address. Good morning.
My name's Tom Zener. I live at 11433 Cottingham Road. And if you look where Ken wants to build his house, see that driveway right there? Right there on the H of Cottingham? That's, that's my place right there.
Okay.
Right. And see that there? That's a fence line. My other neighbor's there. So, I talked to Ken, and he talked about building a host, a house up on that end, and that's great, but I got to be honest with you. You, you know, here's my problem is, 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 you know, getting everything close, you're kind of, you're right up in, you're right up in everything. Ronnie, my neighbor, when he sells, he's already got his, and I'm sure you guys got, if you go back in his plot, his three, four acres is where his son can subdivide it. So, he could get three homes right on the side of there. I'm guessing, and I could be wrong, but Ken, I'm, you're a realtor. I'm guessing you're tight up in here, so when you do develop that, you might put it in corn now, but in five years, when it's right, or three years, that's all going to be homes. And the reason you're so crowded up here is that's at one or two more lots along there because it's beautiful subdivided. If, if I was you, I would think the same thing. But the only thing you do when you crowd that way, that way? I raise hunting dogs. I moved out there to get a little bit of the country. You're taking all, you're, everything's in my face. You're, you're right there. I can't come out my drive, you know, dog's probably going to run across the road. I mean, if you really want to setback, they bulldoze all the time. You could cut the tree line back a little bit. You could, you could slide down to the, the green unless you got intent and subdivided and all that. You know what I'm saying? That's my thing. It's not that I don't want you for a neighbor. Love to have you for a neighbor, but I know where this is all going. In, in my little piece of the country, and I know things change, it's going to be all right, right out my drive is going to be my face. Ronnie's side, your side, you're, you're tight to the road. Everything's right there. The only thing saves me is I live on a pie, just Monroe. But, but Dwayne that sold you that already came back in the farmstead. Darlene had sold him the place, and she felt bad, so Hoffman's right below me. Otherwise, I was, you know, for a guy that has hunting dogs, and they're a little noisy at feed time, it was a good spot, but, and I don't mind you being a neighbor, but I know where this is going. This is all going to get subdivided. You're going to move somewhere else. You're going to live in there for a while when that's all done. You're going to go on somewhere in the country where you're alone, and now I got, you know what I'm saying? You, you can see my point, right? So, I'm just asking, does it have to be there? Is it, it can't be back, or does it got to be right out to the road? When I, when I bought my place, they, they told me I had to be so much off the center line, and my buildings couldn't be this, and I had to be to the T. They told me at one time that could be a major thoroughway, and they needed room in case they got to change the road. Now, you got Flex Steel, you got all these plants. Is that road going to need to be widened? Is it going to be, now is he going to be out too far? These are just questions I'm asking. But I know where this is going, and you can't say that's not. So, I'm just asking, you know, why do we got to bend the rules just, just so close to the road that, it just seems like, man, you're right there. You know what I mean? I don't know how close you are to the road. How many feet are you now?
We'll, we'll let you, we'll, we'll give you a moment here. So, we are in public hearing, so that's good. But we'll, we'll call him up, see if he's interested in answering the question, so that's good feedback.
Okay. No, that's, I just want, I just, one, you know, like you said, Ken seems like a really nice guy, led the home for a neighbor. I'm just worried that where this is all going, and then beside all the homes that are going eventually in there, run me out. I got another one with Ronnie and him. I'm going to have like four homes right in my face, just right all, right out to you, you know, it's, and then to bend the rules, the, you know, I don't know. But thank you for listening.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Tammy, what are the specifics of the setbacks from R1 to R2?
So, right now, if it stays in R1, he has to be eighty feet from his parcel line. If it goes to R2, he has to be fifty feet.
There was thirty-foot difference?
Yes.
And that's really the only thing we're looking at here, is that thirty foot?
Because, yeah, because it's developable.
It's already zoned R1, so no matter what we say here today, the rest of that can be subdivided. Well, if it was subdivided, it would have, if it was a subdivision, it would have to come back for a subdivision.
Right.
Flat. But as far as just selling it off in smaller lots, and then they would have to get entrance permits.
Right.
That's, that can happen.
That could happen. The only difference is, and Anthony can speak for this too, they like to have the smaller setbacks when they do develop subdivisions eventually, because you have less of the, the pavement and all of the runoff and all of that when your setbacks are less.
Shorter driveways, less water runoff.
Yes, yeah.
Is the lot size the same, or is it smaller?
They have to have a minimum of an acre.
Pardon?
In the county, they have to have a minimum of an acre.
Regardless of R1, R2.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Good morning. I'm Ken Kress. I did talk to Tom, and I did go around, when I started doing this, I talked to three or four of the neighbors and, and told them what I'm doing, that I'm buying this property. I want to build a house closer up to this end because my intentions are to crop the rest of that open field. I, I have developed a couple subdivisions in the past, and actually, we just did one five years ago and built a new house, and I am like you. I, I, I feel where I'm at right now. I'm, I'm too close to my neighbors. So, that's why I'm doing this. I bought this acreage to be out in the country. My plans are to keep cropping this. I, I don't say ten years down the road, but it's probably going to be like this as long as I'm there, Tom. I have two children out of town. They have no intentions of moving back to town. One's in Twin Cities and one's in Cedar Rapids. So, my intent is to build a house. I'm just trying to, like Tammy says, less concrete going in and things like that. The house I'm looking at building is ninety to hundred foot long. So, if I have an eighty-foot setback and, and a hundred-foot-long house, I'm, I have to take down some more trees. And it starts dropping off a little bit there at the tree line. Not too bad, but I could take out some more trees if, if needed, but I, I really don't want to. I'm just looking at less concrete coming in off the road and doing things like that. So, and the reason I'm putting on the north end of the property, I want to keep as much land for cropping as I can. So, I know Mr. Nash next door. I talked to him. He has, his house is there, and then he has the parcel right next to mine is an existing three-acre parcel or something, but I think that right now is all one parcel. So, I think, I think the most he can put in there is one house, I believe. But it's, it's still one parcel. So, he would have to split it again if he puts more than one in there. So, that's, that's where I'm at. I plan on just building my house and having some playground with the woods and cropping it, things like that. So, that's where we're at.
So, your, your request for R1 to R2 is really just thirty feet of driveway?
Correct. And, and if I, that way I don't have to cut down any more trees than I have to in the back to access it, so.
All right. Any other questions for Ken?
I, yeah, I see in, at the zoning board in the minutes, they, they asked if, about subdividing the remainder of the property. And I guess you didn't say no, you said you were going to plan it.
And maybe ten years down the road or something? I don't know. I, as long as I'm there, and I plan on being there a long time, because like I say, John Goodman asked me that question, and I've known John for years. And, and he knows I've developed some subdivisions in the past, but like I just said, I'm in a subdivision, and I'm, I don't have enough elbow room, so that's why I'm driving my wife nuts and buying this piece of property and building it again, so. But that's our intent, is to leave it green space, and, and Tom, I hope we can be good neighbors and all, and all that, too. Yeah. I, I know what you're saying. I, I totally agree with you. You know, I, I, I see what you're saying, so. But I, I don't want to cut down any more trees than I have to. I have a long house going in there. I just want to not have as much driveway, I guess, is what I'm doing, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Tammy, can you put up the zoning map again for me, please? You could flip it away so we could read it. Flip it the other way, please.
This way?
Yes, right there. Thank you.
What?
Yep. It helps me read stuff.
So, the green is all R...
This all would be your R1 residential stuff. This yellowish is your city. Right here is R2 already.
And so the subdivision just to the south is still R1?
It is still R1.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
One question, Tammy.
Sure.
This request is to rezone the entire property to, to R2, correct?
Yes, it is. The, the entire, the entire piece.
Could we just rezone the north, couple acres of that as R2, and leave the rest of it R1? Because that wouldn't, at this point, wouldn't make any difference for your purposes, would it, Ken? I don't believe so. I don't believe so. Just for rezoning purposes, you wouldn't?
They're, they're unofficial boundaries.
You can rezone just an acre of that land if you wanted. So, like, if you wanted to come up here in that area and just rezone that little piece, I think we've talked about that a little bit, Ken. You could do that. But it, it really doesn't change the outcome in the end.
Well, just if, for future, future boards, if there was an expansion for more, more houses to be built, a future board would have to review it again.
Yes, yes.
If they wanted to do the shorter setback at that point.
It would go out to public hearings.
I think that gives us a better future planning.
Yeah.
If, as things change, if it's ten years from now, things are going to be different out there ten years from now than they are now.
Ken, if you, I'll have to, if the podium, if you'd like to speak, we'd, we'd love to hear your comments, though, but I, I'll address you to the podium. So, I'm, I'm kind of where you're at. I, if it's a rezoning for convenience for setback, what you're doing is setting a precedent for other boards that this is R2. Now, it's pretty logical. It could be R2. Pretty logical it could stay R1 as well. It's right in that area. And so really, you're just talking about setbacks and the ability, the ease of subdividing.
Yeah.
You can already be subdivided now. Obviously, future boards would review the plat, the proposed access, those types of things.
Yes.
Question for you. How often is boards, I haven't seen one where we've rezoned for, I'll say, convenience of a driveway? I don't think I've seen one of those.
I think that this request isn't uncommon, that, you know, the fact of, for the location of the house, to go from R1 to R2, we've done that, I think, fairly frequently over the eight years that I've been here.
Okay.
And I think this one makes sense. I, I like the idea of trying to save as many trees as possible. That thirty foot, you know, I realize that makes a difference to the neighbors, but in the scheme of things, thirty foot isn't that big. It's, there's going to be a house there, and whether it's thirty foot closer to the road or thirty foot further away, you know, is one thing, but no, we've, we've done that. This isn't uncommon.
And the zoning maps are not survey level? They're...
No, they're not.
They're diagrams on our map.
Yeah. The only time, yeah, that's just something that we have in our office, so when a person comes in to build, we have an area that we can say, this is your buildable area. And whether that be one acre, two acres, whatever you would be comfortable with.
All right. So, we are in public hearing. Ken, would you like to address the public or board? You're fine? Okay. So, we are in public hearing. Would you like to speak related to this rezoning? Please go to the podium, state your name. Seeing no one?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Do you have a direction?
Yeah. I would make a motion to rezone, and I'll ask Ken, one, two acres? What, what do you think would you be, to fit your house in there?
I don't know.
Well, the, all we're worried about is, is the house. The only, house is the only thing that needs a setback. So, that's the part that needs to be R2, where you're going to put your geothermal, so that makes any difference, because it's...
Well, it'll all fall under, that'll all fall under that, that should all fall under an acre, pretty easily with a home. They usually could get your well, your septic, and a lot of people have the geothermal. But, I mean, even if you went with one and a half acres, it gives you, should give you a, a, a good area to maybe do your building in. But basically, what I'm hearing you say is...
Right.
You know, you're willing to give them up to a couple acres, maybe of this rezoned area?
To build this house where he, where it makes sense to build it.
Yeah.
Is if...
Well, we cannot do it at all. I mean, I, I'm, we're trying to accommodate you, but if you're, if you're really looking at redoing this entire acreage, is what you're, you're making it sound like right now, you're giving more credence to the, the argument that's going to be subdivided sooner, better than later, you can accept the acre, acre and a half as R2 and build your house to where you want it to, or I'm probably not going to support the rezoning at all. Because I, if you're, if you're truly looking at building a house for you and your wife for the next how many years and not worrying about subdividing the rest of this, I don't know why we're arguing or having this discussion at all right now. Okay.
And I would say the two acres would give him the zone that he would want to make sure he's getting his geothermal and everything.
So, we have a motion to rezone for how many acres?
I would say, let's go two acres.
Okay. So, we have a motion for two acres? We have a motion and a second to, to rezone the request from R1 to R2 for two acres. All in favor?
Aye. Discussion, please.
Sure. Discussion.
Okay. I just want to comment, we, you know, and I understand Mr. Zener's concerns, but really, we're dealing with, this is already R1, so Mr. Kress could go ahead and, and even without the zoning change, put in a subdivision, but he's saying he's not going to do that. That's why we're going with the two acres. But I, I tend to fall on the side of property rights, and so, you know, I, I think this is somewhat of a concession on Mr. Kress's part, but we've had a lot bigger subdivisions than this, and, and usually there's neighbors that don't like subdivisions coming by them. It's referred to as not in our backyard. But understand your concerns, Tom. I just don't, you know, I, you know, I, the property rights, you know, that's substantial for me. It's already, it's already zoned R1. So, he could put in, he could start putting in homes there at any time under R1. We prefer R2 because of the shorter setback, shorter driveways, less water runoff, which should, you know, that should be better for neighbors for runoff and that type of thing. But I do support this. I just wanted to comment that, you know, there, there are, you know, rights of property owners, and Mr. Kress does own the land. But in this case, with what was talked about at the zoning meeting, I think Darrell's motion is in order, and I'll support it, so.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Rezoning is approved.
So, Ken, I'll just need you to stop in the office someday so we can map out that two acres that you want, because I'll have to change that for the publication and stuff. Okay? So, maybe if you could stop in tomorrow sometime, would be great?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Next, we have on our zoning, we have a zoning request for Richard and Belita Bradley Trust and Greg Blum, A1 agriculture to A2 agricultural residential. Tammy?
The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, three acres more or less, to separate the home from the crop ground for estate purposes. The property located 5.18 miles south of the city of Dubuque along Lamb Road and Benefit Road is legally described as the northwest of the northeast and the southwest of the northeast, all in section 10, T-87 North, R2E, Washington Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Richard and Belita Bradley. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property, and there are no special use permits attached to this property. Three zoning notification letters were sent to the property owners. Comprehensive plan, chapter 9, agricultural natural resources, page 134, objective 3.1, and chapter 8, housing, page 122, objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So, this, this kind of gives you the area here, what they're doing, but I'm going to show you here, as you can see, this is where the home is, right in this area, and, and there's a little piece of the land that they use as part of the, uh, road, across the road. road, um, across the road, so this is the area they're trying to rezone. It goes over two parcels, so I'll show this back to you. Nope. The whole area out there is zoned pretty much agricultural. You can see there's some other splits out here, but those were obviously done, you know, through the years, but they weren't rezoned.
Okay, other questions for Tammy?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing related to this rezoning request, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we are in public hearing related to this rezoning request. Anyone like to speak related to this zoning? Please go to the podium and state your name and address. Always count on Dave.
Uh, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. I've been working with the Bradley family for several years on this property, uh, first of all, when the original farm site was surveyed off as, and then, uh, more recently, uh, trying to deal with, uh, just kind of what Richard's gonna do with his home, uh, going forward, because there were, were at 1.2 homes on this property. And, uh, basically the intent is, this thing isn't a trust, all the, all of his children are involved in the trust. Uh, one of his daughters, ultimately, when Richard decides he's either moving off this place, or, uh, or gets moved off this place, I don't know what the best way to say that, is, uh, is looking to buy this acreage, and they're, we're basically getting, uh, the survey set up, and as part of that, obviously, with the smaller, smaller acreage, she'd be able to have that in her and her husband's name, and then would continue partial ownership of the rest of the crop ground. So that's, this is ultimately what they're looking at for the acreage size and shape. Um, we did show kind of a future garage on the back, just, uh, because when they, they're in the Des Moines area now, apparently, and, uh, you know, as far as storing some supplies, or equipment, or cars, or whatever. I just want, we always wanted to illustrate kinda why, why that was on there, I guess, so. Yeah, ultimately, I think the intent is to keep it all in the family, it's just a matter of, uh, kind of setting it up so it can be transferred forward. I guess if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Just the future garage issue, does that mean there's a future driveway permit?
Uh, I don't know, um, I guess I can't answer that, you know, they could get it, access kind of around the current house back there, or, um-
I'm just wondering if that's gonna impact this in the future, because I, I just don't know how. Typically, that's not something that would, would be easily approved, I would think, I don't know what-
Yeah, I, I guess I, I can't answer that, they would have to apply for it, and if they can't get one, they would have to figure out a way to either work, uh, the driveway around the east side of the house back, or, or possibly move the, move the garage to the south side of the, uh, the driveway easement that goes back to the farm ground.
But that's a lot of the reason why they're looking for three acres?
Um, I guess I would have to let somebody else answer that, I guess, I was just told here's what they were looking at for potentially all these-
Tammy, do you have any idea why they're going for three acres?
I hadn't spoken to the Bradleys about that, so I, you could, if you would like to come up?
I, I know we had worked on a different size, and then it got expanded at one point, so.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm Kathy Bradley Blum, 4997 Route 61, so my husband and I live on the home farm, which is immediately to the west. And, so, my sister and her husband are the ones that are interested in, you know, coming back to live on this property. So, they would access from the, the current driveway, and they head to the north to get up to that garage. But this would enable them to have a garden and, you know, fruit trees and, and such, in the, uh, surrounding the house area. So, that, that's, that's their plan, but their, the access would be from the current, where the mailbox is, and that's on the s- south side of the house, right now, the, to the county road. And, you know, they would drive to the east side of the house up to that garage, so. It enabled them to have a garden and, and fruit trees and such, right there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a downside to having this, and this is to Tammy, I'm sorry. Is there a downside to having this larger? Because having a garden and fruit trees, and that doesn't need to be zoned A2 to do that, but is-
Yeah, there's not really, because what'll happen is, is if you look at the conditions to this, what we do then is like the typical A2, you're gonna take those two 40s there, and they're not gonna be able to build extra homes on them. So there's really not a, 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 a problem with doing it that way. And we, we run anywhere, it seems like, from one and a half to, you know, potentially four or five acres on some of these A2s, based on the buildings and, and where we're accessing stuff, and what their, what their future plans are.
The south A1 40 could be subdiv, or could be parsed out, and also A1 as well, or A1 to A2, is that correct? It could follow the same scenario, so then- Just the north 40 is the only one influenced, right?
Right, and that's what we're just talking about here. So you're gonna, you're gonna tie up this one.
The top one, yes, but the bottom one would be still independent and would still be A1, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, the whole, you obviously would have, they'd have to parse it out in order to get another A2 in the southern 40.
Uh, Kat, Kathy did indicate that they do in, uh, plan on putting a geothermal on this property too, on the north side of that house, so. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I guess my experience in the past is typically when there's a house, you wanna tie up the remainder of the 40 that the house is on, because of the density issue out there, and in theory, with the two 40s out there, there's potential to be two homes on it, that it's encompassed.
And that's the direction you were heading as well, for a larger A2?
Yeah, I didn't know where, what they were looking, I know it said that there was, only, they couldn't have any other dwelling on the property, but it, it doesn't, I don't see where it specifies which-
It's this one, that'll be this parcel.
It's just the one with the home on it, even though this rezoning is going into the other parcel.
Right, right, because they're not gonna-
I think, I think that needs to be cleaned up a little bit, because I think it's questionable on what that means. In my mind, if it's, if it's zoned, if it's re, rezoning into that southern 40, the way this is written, uh, from the zoning board, I could interpret that real easily, to say there couldn't be another home on that south 40.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, yes, and I'm just gonna look at the minutes here.
Today, that, that's one parcel, is that correct? Both those, that's 80 together?
No, they're two separate, max parcels.
Okay, they are two separate ones, okay.
Separate, saleable lots, there as it exists right now.
So right now, you, they could sell off A1, the southern 40, and come right back to a future board and request another A2?
Yes, they could.
They could request it.
Oh, yeah.
Or they wouldn't even have to come back to you.
And that's kinda what you're getting at, right?
If it was a 40, and they were using it, and they could build on it without coming back to us.
That, as well.
They wouldn't have to bring it back.
Unless you interpret it that, since this A2 goes in that south 40, I think for the, for the Bradley's, is, is, yeah, or, that needs to be cleaned up, because right now, you could ar, I think you could argue that that's south 40 couldn't have a house built on unless they come back here either.
Yeah, and I can look at that condition and make sure that it's only directly affecting that parcel.
The parcel that the house is on.
Yep, we can make sure that that's done that way.
You wanna clean that, is there, Tammy, are you aware of any? Tammy or Dave, are you aware of any immediacy of this rezoning?
No, I don't think it has, I mean, as far as the rezoning, if it happens, uh, this, this week or in two weeks, I don't see an issue with that.
It'll be four weeks.
Next month, basically.
I'm not, I'm not afraid of approving this, as long as they clean up the wording, and it's, and it's for their, for their benefit to have a change.
Because, because right now, the application does include the second parcel, yes it does, so.
For the A2 zoning, it includes the second parcel, because the A2 is going into both. The condition is only gonna be placed on the north 40.
Are we sure of that? Because that's, that's, yeah, that's not the way it reads here in my mind, that's, that's my only con, concern here.
And I would agree with you, Darryl, the way it looks, that that's how it would be, so we can correct that.
If that is, can be changed, we can, we can move forward with this rezoning, and then have that changed, and then, before they sign it, correct?
We can do that, yes, we can absolutely can correct and make sure that-
That we still get done today.
Is done on this, this one parcel only.
Right, okay.
So we're in public hearing, anyone else would like to speak related to the zoning case? Okay, seeing no one?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning, and, uh, to have, uh, our zoning, uh, department, uh, clarify that the, uh, prohibition on additional homes only applies to the, uh, I believe the north parcel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries.
I will, uh, make a motion to suspend the requirement that the amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted, and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, so rezoning is approved. Thank you, okay. Now, next case we have is Donald and Mary Maloney Foundation in Anastasia Maloney Klimic, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. All, go ahead.
Sorry. The applicants are requesting a rezone from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, 2.7 acres more or less, to separate the home from the crop ground for estate purposes. The property located 1.83 miles south of the city of Dubuque along Feeny Road is legally described as the southwest of the southwest, Section 36, T88 North, R2E, Table Mountain Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Donald and Mary Maloney Foundation. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west. R1 rural residential to the north, R2 single-family residential to the north, and there are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Dubuque was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this is the area that they're asking to be rezoned. And the whole area out there, and this, this is, you can see, it's all agricultural here, but as you get up into here, this is where the residential comes into. And the foundation has been, uh, getting rid of some of the properties that they just really don't have the use for, for the buildings anymore. And I know that, I know that they're here to speak for it as well, but they plan on keeping the le, the rest of the, uh, land in agricultural use.
Okay, any other questions for Tammy? Open the hearing.
Uh, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing related to this zoning request, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for being so prompt at the podium.
Sure, Anastasia Maloney Klimic, 15343 Higginsport Road, Bernard, Iowa. Yeah, as was stated, we're just wanna take the house and the buildings off and sell that.
But isn't that really, is this what A2 is meant for? Because basically, but basically, we're, we're, the idea of tying A2 was to keep them agricult, to stay, if it's A2, it was gonna stay agricultural. Well, this, if this gets sold off, it's gonna be a residential.
This piece.
This piece will be, right?
And, and we have done a lot of these for estate purposes, because they want to keep the rest of the land in agricultural, but the foundation does not wanna maintain this home anymore. Um, they, they don't have a family member that wants to move into this, so it, it currently is a residential lot being used. They're just trying to, for estate purposes and for the foundation purposes, saying, we no longer can sustain this home in this property here. So they wanna split it off, so they can continue the rest of the property in the agricultural use. I mean, you could look at A2, or you could look up, trying to go up the hill, there's R2. I mean, so, we thought A2 fit best on this, just because it is the separation from farmland.
Is this, I guess, Tammy, is this a case of, um, I know that we've had discussions in the past that you don't, this was the best placement for this, but it's not exactly, it's not a cookie cutter?
It, it's not a cookie cutter, and, and again, as I, I show you, just, just a few miles up the road is R2. So, so, yeah, we could've asked for R2, but we felt A2, because it's all for the estate purposes, we felt that A2 fit, 'cause that's the agricultural residential, so actually, A2, you're right, Darryl, is kind of a new.
Not this blatant, I understand that that's the end result of a lot of these that we do, is for, when we do it for estate purposes, is that it's probably, or the likelihood that it's gonna end up with a non-fi, family member. But this one, we're going into this knowing that this is what's going to happen, that this is going to be a residential property. It's not gonna be associated, the people that live there aren't gonna be associated with farming on this property at all. So, I mean, it's just, it just seems a little-
So, so I'm being corrected, from what I understand, the renter that has a contract for the next three years is going to have hired help live in that house, so they are gonna be farming.
So the renter of the land?
Yeah.
Let's correct this, so the lender, the renter of the land, the person that's gonna be living on the farm, it, the home, is going to work the farmland?
Yes, that was my, that's what they were telling us.
I mean, going on some of our documents that we've produced in the past from zoning on A2, one of the stipulations is, in the section A, the proposed residence, home or dwelling, is needed to continue or promote farming operations in the area, and there's a couple other contingencies. So, I think, at least when it was written, A2 was implied that that would be part of the farming operations. That's kinda what you're getting at?
That's exactly what I'm getting at, I don't know, I don't know the answer to it, though, because what we were doing previously was then, we would require that to be a five-acre parcel, that had to be platted separately, and it was its own property then, and then you're taking ex, and the reason for the A2 was to try to reduce these properties down to re, to conserve as much, uh, farmland as pro, as possible. It's just that it, I'm sorry, I don't know, and I agree with you, I don't know what other answer we have, I, we still don't have this thing fixed right.
Right, and the thing that I would tell Darryl, the good thing about this would be, so by doing this, what we are doing is, we are locking up the rest of that parcel. So we are locking up the rest of that parcel, that it can't be developed, that it has to stay in ag land. If I started splitting this-
Well, it doesn't have to, they can still come back and test work, right?
At this point, that would be the intent, um, and the parcel that, if you did this automatically and went into an R2 situation, you know, you're automatically doing something different.
R2 is not on the proposal, right?
No, 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 I'm just talking in general because of it above it.
Yeah. So, right now, there's no replating considerations for this?
There will be a plat for this.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I'm Dave Klimic, Stacy's husband. The reason we're doing this is, it costs us more to rent that property, the house and the shed, than what we make, I mean, taxes and everything like that. So we wanna split that off, the person that's gonna buy it is gonna put, uh,
Cattle.
Cattle or, or calves is what he's gonna use it for in the back shed, and then he's gonna rent or use the house for his help. So that way, we don't lose money on it, we can't keep on losing money. The other alternative we have, if we can't do this, is to tear it all down, because that's where it demands to.
So you're, you're, you're intending to, uh, create a new plat for this, to be a separate parcel, and to sell that off as well?
Potentially, yes, if the rezoning goes through, their intent is to create a parcel around that kind of lined area that you're seeing.
And then we'd have a standalone A2 in a separate, uh, separate plat, which we do have some. What, uh, what is, you're interested in selling the entire parcel, the entire 40?
No, we, we're, there is no interest, it's run by the Maloney Foundation, and that's where it stays. But it's just that we're losing money twenty years on this property, because of the rent and tax upkeep.
Um, when was the A2 introduced, roughly?
Say, what, three, four years ago we did start the A2?
It was, I'm almost being there five years now, and it was starting before I was there.
These time flies, man.
Right, I know, but it's been, it was before I came on board, and so, I, it's close to five years.
We put a lot of time and effort into this, and the zoning board did too, and we knew it wasn't perfect. I just don't, I, I, I don't know if there's another option, and then for this one, there probably isn't at this point, but it, that's something that you may well look at in the future, trying to come up with something else, that, because it's a little disingenuous, because like the way Jay just read off, that was the intent of this A2, was for it to stay, it was to facilitate keeping people on the farm, uh, and, and using smaller parcels and keeping more farm ground in production. I don't know what the other alternative is for a situation like this, because I really don't think I want R2 sitting there either.
Right, that's-
So I think-
It's, in fact, it's, it's gonna act the same as R2, you're subdividing, and if the plat, if you go through it and you subdivide this, and the plat is approved, you have another parcel that's standalone-
Yeah.
-out there that someone can live in and have no connection to ag.
Right. And that wasn't the intent of the ordinance, but I don't know what else you'd do.
And if I may, but every A2 that you've ever done could end up that way.
Right, absolutely.
It's not the intent, but they could.
In the future, five, 10, 20 years from now, most of those parcels are going to be non-ag related, probably. So, this one's just a little more blatantly not that.
Does it have any answer?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I don't either, Tammy, I'm just, just-
Yeah, I understand.
I think the fact that the, uh, zoning board passed it unanimously, uh, I guess means something here, but-
Not, not really, we've, we've, we've had issues with, as, as a board previously anyway, with some of the, uh, decisions that came from the zoning board, they seem to sometimes have, had a different, uh, viewpoint on a lot of things than the board had. But, so, I mean, it, just because they approve it unanimously, in my mind, doesn't mean that that's something that we have to do. I still, I still think this board needs to make the final decision on what this board thinks is the, is the right way moving forward. Typically, we do follow the recommendation of the zoning board, but not always.
I mean, if there were some dissenting arguments or something-
I'm not gonna oppose this.
You know.
I'm just making a statement, I just think that it's, it's, uh, I just wish there was another way of doing it, and there's not at this point. This is still better than what we were doing, but I, I think- But I, I think, I would, something I think that wouldn't hurt to be revisited again and, and try to come up with something else, and I don't know what that something else is.
And I, and I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Just don't have the answer for that either right now.
If we know it's going to go non-agricultural, then let's just hit it right square between the eyes and say, okay, this isn't going to be agricultural, it's going to be this, but still, let's do it. Because we can't just have them not use this property, I don't want to see it tore down.
Yeah, that's the other issue, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are in public hearing, anyone like to speak related to this rezoning request? Okay, Dave, yes, come on up.
Again, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. I guess my comment's kind of related to the, the intent of the A2 more than this project specifically. In my mind, the A2 was set up to allow people to disperse their land without including excess farm ground in those acreages that, in theory, are getting pulled out of production because there's three acres of crop ground got sucked in on a five-acre parcel, and will probably never be part of that farm, even though the farmer next to him is renting it back. It allowed for the smaller parcels and to put that condition on the remainder to minimize the, the density out in that rural area. Basically, looking at every 40-acre parcel or tax parcel as being transferable and buildable, if you have an ag, if you fill out a Schedule F. Basically, what it does is, allows this thing to be dispersed from the estate, either to a family member or somebody else, because the neighbor wants to buy the crop ground and farm it with his farm, and the people that currently live in the house want to stay living in their house or sell their house and move to town. It's kind of giving, again, it's really an ability to give people an option to disperse their farm and still minimize the density out in those rural areas. If that makes sense, so.
There's no additional...
Not necessarily to keep these things in the family, but to minimize density in the rural area.
No, but it says in the ordinance that it was supposed to be for farm use.
Yes, and I guess, in my mind, that's the farmer, that's the, I guess, what we were doing before this was rezoning these things to R, to put them on small one-acre parcels, which didn't make sense either. So it allowed for an ag-type zoning, a residential use in an ag-owned land, and put that condition on it to minimize density.
This, this is better than what we had.
Yes, this is by far better than what we had.
You're not going to come up with anything that's perfect, it's just that it...
Yeah, and, and do, do I think it could be done other ways? Could have it remained a, an A1 zoning where, basically, if you're going to survey that off, that the remainder has, has to have that easement or condition on it? You know, it probably could have happened that way too. So, anyway, that's all I had.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so we are in public hearing, anyone like to speak related to this rezoning case?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, the rezoning is approved. All right, thank you for your discussion on that, that was good. Okay, next zoning case we have is Kevin and Darlene Kuro and Matthew Kuro, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential.
Okay. The applicant's requesting rezon from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, one acre more or less, to be allowed to build a single-family home for their son who assists in the farming operation. The property located 2.93 miles west of the city of Bernard along Creole Road is legally described as Lot 3 of Creole Sub, Section 31, T87 North, R1E Prairie Creek Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Kevin Creole Farms, Inc. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property, there are no special use permits attached to this property. Five rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners. Comprehensive plan, Chapter 9 Agricultural Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So as, as you recall, we just had done an entrance for this one earlier, which, that, that's coming into here, and so he wants to build the home on the front part of the property. And this is a standalone parcel? And it is agriculturally zoned in that area? There is another parcel that's next to that, as you can see. When that was done, I couldn't tell you, but there is a separate parcel there already next to that. So if, if, yeah, right here.
So you're saying that that's already platted, the Kevin Creole?
That one's already platted.
Not the southern one, the northern one?
This is, this is a platted parcel, and this is a platted parcel. This is the one where the Creoles want to rezone just the front part of this parcel for their son to build the home.
Okay. What's the size of that parcel?
This parcel here is 2.2.3 acres.
And when was that separated?
2.93, I'm sorry.
Do you know when that was separated, or when that was partial?
No, that parcel could have been out there for years, I don't know when that one would have been split. As, as well as this one too, I, you know, I could do research to probably find out, but it really...
That's fine, I'm just curious.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are in public hearing, anyone like to speak related to the zoning case? Please go to the podium. We'd be good to... You can't be left out, of course, right? You got to come up here and tell us your, this, your ID is.
And I live at 17211 Irish Hill Lane, Bernard. Kind of the first thing, we're talking about the variance on the driveway. The mapping is a little bit off, because the driveway, there's a fence line, corner post set there, and it, the driveway is to the north of that.
Okay.
The line, apparently, that line goes through the middle of driveway, but the driveway is north of the corner post that's existing there.
And our mapping system...
Yeah.
The driveway is to the north of that south boundary. Just looking to be a kind of a central location to have Matthew put a house there, and we own ground to the, we farm ground to the north of that, east of that, and south of that. There's a grain bin on that and a hay shed that we use. We've had verbal comments from the neighbor to the north and to the south, that they have no problem with the rezoning.
Okay, this is the scenario we see more often. Yeah, with A2. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So we are in public hearing, anyone like to speak related to this rezoning? Seeing no one?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Make a motion to...
Motion carries?
Yeah, aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries.
I make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for post, for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, rezoning is approved. Thank you. Okay, next on our zoning list is James and Deborah Kennedy, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. Tammy?
The applicant's requesting rezon from A1 agriculture to A2 agricultural residential, one acre more or less, to be allowed to separate the home from the cropland to sell to the son and daughter-in-law. The property is located 1.07 miles south of the city of Eppworth along Pilot Grove Road, and is legally described as the northwest of the southeast, Section 22, T88 North, R1W, Taylor Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by James and Deborah Kennedy. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west. A2 agricultural residential to the west and to the east. The A2 agricultural residential to the east on zoning case number 0417 of 18 was to rezon 2.64 acres to be allowed to survey off two existing homes on the farm and to allow for the construction of a new home. The A2 agricultural residential to the west on zoning case number 102815 was to rezon 2.836 acres to allow the owners to purchase additional land from the neighbor. The A2 agricultural residential to the west on zoning case number 020618 was to rezon 3.43 acres to be allowed to reconfigure an existing lot with a home on it and allow for a new home on a second lot. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property, and there are no special use permits attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Eppworth was notified. Comprehensive plan, Chapter 9 Agricultural Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this is the area they're looking to rezon. I'll show you the map here, so you can see that. So here is the zoning map, and as you can see, there was some A2 zoning just done up in that area, by those dates I had given you. And on this one here, you'll see, this is where they're looking to rezon. They're looking to take this piece off.
Okay, any other questions for Tammy? All right, we'll open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in public session for a public hearing for this rezoning, anyone like to speak related to that? Please go to the podium.
Hi, I'm James Kennedy, the owner. I'm trying to sell this to my son for a start form. I guess he has to have it residential, and then the buildings and that ag too, for the farm things, but it's a start form and going down the line, I guess. Thank you.
So you, you plan then to separate the parcel and sell that off entirely as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The 4.5 acres of it, buildings and everything, so he has the whole thing.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the zoned area, but what is they saying is, they will separate about a five, just roughly a five-acre piece, but that'll all remain in agricultural zoning? They just are going to rezon around the home and the buildings there for the A2.
Okay, so that, is that five acres, that section? Go ahead.
This, this section will be the, the, yeah, the area that's platted eventually is the 4.34, but this is the area that will allow the rezoning area up in here.
Okay, so rezoning the A2 for just the roughly 1.33 acres, but the, this is a proposed plat as well? And so there's an additional, on kind of the, I think it's to the east of the shed?
Yes. They'll acquire more land, yeah.
That's crop land? Part, and that's, how many acres is?
The total on that eventually is going to be around four, 4.34 acres total.
Okay.
Because then that'll take in the shed and the other...
And so the other areas will stay in A1, and A2 will just be the house? But the entire parcel will be five acres?
Yeah, and the intent is to keep farming the rest of that land and using it for farm use, and eventually, like he said, you know, the son hopes to buy into the whole farm.
So why replat five acres? Do you know the answer to that? Mr. Kennedy, would you?
I think Mr., Mr. Schneider...
Well, maybe Mr. Kennedy, you're the owner, feel free, both of you come up together, that'd be great.
I guess my intentions were, east of the buildings is squared off to my neighbors. I think there's actually an acre there of crop ground, but instead of dividing that jog down, the yellow line there, the fence line is over where the A1 above is, I thought just make it square, make it simple.
Okay.
So actually, there is an acre of crop ground there.
And that's going to show on...
That would go with the buildings, right, Dave?
Yes.
Everybody has different intents, I... Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Anyway, yeah, just, when I meet with people, they kind of tell me what they want to do, and, and obviously, when we start talking about smaller than 40 acres, we're looking at an A2 zoning, so I kind of set it up, and, and I, I can go back and forth. I mean, as long as we're putting the condition on the remainder of this and what, and the remainder of the 40 that the home is on, or in this case, probably the remainder of the 40 and the remainder of the five, I guess, I could go either way, whether we do, we rezon the whole four acres, or whether we just did the 1.3. I just kind of illustrate it the way I think it's going to present both to you guys, as well as the zoning board, and...
But maybe to use your previous comments about 10 minutes ago, and so hypothetically, this would set up a scenario where this parcel no longer becomes an ag parcel, and all five acres now are removed from ag, as another generation possibly lives there that is not tied to the farm. Because it's a separate parcel that could be bought and sold with the zoning that's attached to it, correct? To anyone?
Yeah, and, and in this case here, I think the intent, I think you asked me how many acres were in there, because they were just going to rent it back to the, the current renter of the rest of the cropland, so...
It's probably only 150 feet wide.
It's...
I just wanted to make things square.
Simple, so you don't have to slide up and down, because you're, you don't own the land to the east, is that correct?
No. I thought it's common sense, just make it square, so he buys one piece.
I guess, you know, I, I look at it more of a, I mean, I've, I've got the same situation on my property. I've got five acres, the way the bank wanted it financed at the time, this was back before the A2 zoning. I've got the house and four acres of crop ground on one parcel. Didn't make any sense at all, we did it because that's the way the bank wanted it, that's the way we could get it through at the time. They didn't want, I, I own livestock, I, so they didn't want that ag venture on, on that residential loan. So it was purely a financing thing. I live in the house, I operate the farm, I crop the ground. You know, a lot of this, every scenario's different. It's, whether it's a situation for financing, whether it's a situation for transferring the property to family, or transferring, or just getting themselves out of the farm at some point, because we all are going to get to that point. It's basically trying, in my mind, the A2 zoning is a density issue more than a usage issue. You know, if they've got ag buildings, the chances of them having some type of livestock or whatever is better than if it's a, it's a house out in the middle of nowhere, so. Anyway, that's, yeah, I, I basically set it up the way they were requesting it, and, and, you know, whether you rezon the whole 4.3 acres to A2, or whether it's the one acre, I guess, to me, it's a non-issue.
That, that's not the issue, the issue is probably separating the plat out with X amount of acres that will, that, that leads it to eventually being removed from agriculture in the future. I'm not saying it's the plan, but that's, would be allowed then, once it's separated.
Yes, and that's, every parcel that's out there is transferable without another survey or review from anybody else, so we have to keep that in mind when we're looking at these things, so.
Agreed, but usually, it's very difficult to, to farm just that sliver...
Yes, yeah.
Of two or three acres.
Yeah.
And so that then becomes... In, in, in the future, if that parcel would be parsed out and sold to somebody not tied to the ag industry, then it most likely would not be farmed.
It could still be rented to the...
Be rented.
Yeah, it's either going to be rented, or they're going to put a garden there, or they're going to, yeah, who knows? I guess I can, or, or another building gets built on it, I guess, I don't know.
But it could still be farmed.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yes, if they rent it out, just tied to it. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, good. Okay, we are in public session, public hearing, anyone like to speak related to zoning case? All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The rezoning is approved. Thank you. Okay, our last zoning case is zoning case with Julie Hubble and James and Sharon Schiltz?
Schultz.
Schultz, thank you. A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential.
The applicant's request to rezone from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, two point five acres more or less, to separate the home and the farm buildings from the crop ground, to be allowed to sell the remaining land to the adjacent neighbors, James and Sharon Schultz. The property located point three two miles north of the city of Luxembourg along Highway fifty two north is legally described as the north nine hundred and thirty three feet of the northeast of the northeast, Section sixteen, T ninety north, R two W Liberty Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Julie Hubble. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property and there are no special use permits attached to this property. Five rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Luxembourg was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter nine, Agricultural Natural Resources, page one thirty four, Objective three point one, and Chapter eight, Housing, page one twenty two, Objective twelve point seven may apply to this case. So what's happening is this is the lane that takes you up into the property and she's looking to keep the house and her buildings and she'll be separating off the rest of the farm and selling it to the adjacent neighbors. So I can show you. And as you can see, the Schultz own here and then above that and then other land in the area. And if you look at this aerial here, this shows you where her lane comes in and where the house and the building area that she's asking to split off. And she's doing this for estate purposes. She doesn't farm, he's been renting the farm land from her for quite a few years and so he just wants to acquire the land and she's looking for estate purposes to, to sell it off.
Okay, any other questions for Tammy?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in public hearing. Anyone like to speak related to this zoning request?
Jim Schultz, one oh seven Second Avenue East, Luxembourg, and we're, my wife and I, we wanted to purchase some ground. We've been farming and that's what's going to stay, is just ag ground.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Schultz? Thank you.
Yep.
We are in public hearing related to this rezoning. Anyone like to speak related to the rezoning request?
And there's a, there's a plat following this today.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Rezoning is approved. All right, I believe that ends our zoning requests, so thank you very much for your patience and working through all those. Thank you very much, Tammy. We, we have one item, I believe, is we have a public hearing for the shooting range. So we're on to five C, the notice of public hearing for the plans and specifications for the bullet trap for the shooting range. And that notice of public hearing would be for proposed form of contract for the Dubuque County Shooting Range on Wednesday, January second at nine eight AM, and that's right here in this room. And so that's where we'll have a public hearing related to the improvements and continual development for our shooting range.
Make a motion to approve, all this public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the notice of public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, now we are in the approval of the plats, so Tammy, you're right back at it now.
Okay.
First on our agenda is a final plat of the FJ Rousch addition.
Okay. The property is owned by Francis and Joyce Rousch and is located one point one six miles east of the city of Bangstan along Asbury Road with a total of ten point zero seven acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural and A2 agricultural residential. A rezoning of the property to A2 agricultural residential was approved on zoning case number zero eight thirty four of eighteen. The purpose of this plat is to separate the one point eight nine acres with the home and farm buildings to sell to the grandson for estate purposes. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of eight point one eight acres surveyed and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two is a total of one point eight nine acres with a home and farm buildings and it will be sold to the grandson. Lot one will have a twenty foot access easement across lot two off of Asbury Road and lot two will use an existing residential access off of Asbury Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat and the bank consent is signed and attached and all signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as the plats officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this was a zoning case that you had done and this is an aerial so that you can see what's happening. Right here, this is what's being split off. Now, the intent is, just to, to remind you, the intent is that someday the grandson will purchase the rest of this farm ground. But this for them financially, this is where they had to start.
Any other questions for Tammy?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The plat is approved. Next resolution is the final plat of the Hubble Farm subdivision.
Which, you know, we just went through this, so. The property is owned by Julie Hubble and is located point three two miles north of the city of Luxembourg along Highway fifty two north with a total of twenty six point nine six acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural with a pending zoning case number ten forty three of eighteen to rezone the two point five acres to A2 agricultural residential. The purpose of the plat is to separate the home and the farm buildings from the crop ground to be allowed to sell the remaining land to the adjacent neighbors, James and Sharon Schultz. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of twenty four point four two acres surveyed and it will be sold to James and Sharon Schultz and will remain in current agricultural use. Lot two is a total of two point five four acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and use. Lot one will have a, a twenty six foot access easement across lot two and lot two will use an existing residential access off of Highway fifty two north. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. There were no liens or mortgages on this property and all the signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as the plats officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. Again, we just went over this, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Tammy?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Plat is approved. Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate it. Next, there's our action items. And seven A is an action item for resolution of appointments, deputies, and assistants and clerks, and understanding there's a modification that we might need to make for this resolution.
Yes, thank you. We actually have one of the positions on here, the maintenance intern. We also have the requisition to fill it as ten B, I believe. Yes, that's ten B, so can we table this till after we approve the requisition? This was one that we have a, a college student, an engineering student from Lawrence that we came to us very quickly and so we wanted to move to make the offer to him. So we have both the requisition to fill and then the, the personnel action to, to, to approve the hire of a specific individual. So we would just need to move seven A till after we have approved.
Review the personnel.
Motion to table till later in the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to table the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Resolution is tabled. Next resolution is approve the necessary documents with Diamond Mowers of Sioux Falls, South Dakota for the purchase and mounting of the two thousand nineteen diamond motor with rotary cutting head. Sounds like a neat piece of equipment.
We do have an issue with a contract that Supervisor Baker picked up on. The correct amount for this contract should be twenty five thousand one hundred and fifty nine dollars, but for some reason, on the first page of the contract, sixty one thousand one hundred and three dollars was entered.
Okay.
I don't know where that came from, but up in the parentheses up just above it, it's in twenty five thousand one fifty nine, which is the correct amount. So.
We need to.
Can we correct this here and still approve it or do we need to wait for a, because my understanding is this is signed, right? So.
But not by me.
Right, so we don't, we probably want to table this until?
I spoke with Denise about it and she said to approve it contingent on the corrected document. The figure when we get the, you can approve the contract and Jay to sign it after we get the, the contract with the correct dollar amount.
We'll have to send out another contract for signature.
Okay. But then does that one have to come back?
No.
Because we're, okay.
You're.
I think I, and my guess is whoever prepared this used a previous one and left a number in there that they shouldn't have, but I'll make a motion unless there's other discussion.
Oh, no, we're good.
To approve the documents and with the contingency that the contract where it states sixty one thousand one hundred and three dollars and zero cents be modified to read twenty five thousand one hundred and fifty nine dollars and no cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion is approved. The resolution is approved with the change noted. Next resolution, seven C is a resolution to approve the vacation of a portion of the right of way on John Deere Road. I know that we've had some additional discussions on this. Anthony, you've been quarterbacking those. Would you like to comment?
Yes, Davis Construction has requested to vacate this wide area of right of way that we have just on the west side of South John Deere Road. The discussion has come up as to whether there could be a connection to the Heritage Trail from the existing parking lot that's, that's been built there. I do believe there's some potential to that, but I, I would like to explore that a little more and either table this or just, just cancel this resolution for now and we'd have to come back later on.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate it. I think that was, I had made the request and it just seemed like we had a parking lot that was built, but no connection to the trail and seemed like an opportunity to see if we can get a connection. So what you're requesting is a little more time to review this with yourself and/or the Conservation Board ever soon, along with the Davises?
This probably isn't going to get resolved in two to four weeks. It's probably better off just to.
I think, you know.
Cancel it and start from scratch, let our later date.
Well, at any rate, we're going to have to redo this plat of vacated easement if we put in some kind of drill. It's going to change the acreage.
Yeah.
So it's, we're going to have to redo it. Yeah.
And potentially the, the, I think it's the north, the northern part of the vacated area, I don't believe is in question, is it?
No.
Okay, so you could even separate that off as well. But I'm, I'm comfortable either way, whatever procedure we want to do.
What are the options? Because I.
Prove table or deny, is that right?
Well. I guess I'm asking for this time to table because conversation with Anthony prior to the meeting, then I contacted the Davises and told them we would be tabled.
If you would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
I will second it. I wish you wouldn't have said that because I think we just, you should just.
I understand that and I wish I hadn't done that, but.
So we have a motion and a second to table. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's tabled.
I was trying to save, I was trying to save them from coming in because it, it was clear we weren't going to act on this based on my discussion with Anthony, so I was trying to save them a trip.
Sounds good. Okay, resolution is tabled. Next resolution is approving the leases of the mortgage and deed restrictions in Henry County for the Jump Start Federal Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You're not going to miss these, are you Supervisor Klein? We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next resolution is to approve the lease of mortgage in Des Moines County for the Jump Start Federal Housing Rehabilitation Payment Program.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Resolution is approved. The next resolution is approving the Dubuque County Security Cameras and Procedures Policy. Dawn, do you want to talk to us about how we've got here?
Yes, this is an initiative and a project that was started with the, the Courthouse Security Committee proposing that we have placed additional cameras for security purposes. So as they developed that and worked with IT department to determine placement of cameras, how many cameras we'd need, I was asked to help develop a policy that both discusses how cameras get placed in different areas and different departments and then also how the public in departments can retrieve footage from those because they are most likely, except for certain circumstances, are a public record. So the policy that you have in front of you, we did discuss at a work session in November with the elected officials and department heads. Since then, I have redistributed this to them, asking for comment. I did not receive any feedback. Our IT Director Gilmore also met with all of the department heads in the courthouse to discuss if they have any concerns and if they wanted any cameras within their respective areas. And so he did get positive response, he said, from that, so there will be some additional cameras there. Again, this is for security so that our security staff that's down on the first floor, they will have access to these cameras to be able to view them. Obviously, if there's an incident that they can also go back to the recordings, but there will be live, they'll have access to them live as well. So this is, been vetted through your elected officials and department heads and proposing approval.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion?
In item number six, I think the language works and I think the intent of that was we don't want our managers or supervisors spying on people, but if we need to use the, the footage, if you will, for documentation of certain things, that that would be allowed. But we don't want our managers, supervisors sitting on this and spying on people, basically.
That's.
Surveilling people.
That is correct. They, and, and the only people who have access to the live feed would be IT and then the security team down on the first floor. So the elected officials and department heads would not have that just access, accessible on their desktop computers.
All right, good.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Next resolution is request payment for number 110 for the Jump Start Federal Housing Rehabilitation Payment Program.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, resolution is approved. I'm not seeing any communications, is that correct? Okay, no communications. The next we have is appointments and it looks like we have those four, is that correct?
Yes.
For approval appointments for the Conservation Board, the Township Trustees, Board of Health, and Sunny Crest Advisory Board of Directors.
I have a question on the.
Yes, sir.
Conservation Board and, and the other boards. Are there other active applications for these? Are these just the ones that we haven't seen that are newer and how long do we keep applications on file?
So these are ones that when my staff posts these for the, for applications, these are just new ones that come in. So when there is an opening, we do not go back and access the, the previous year's applications. We only, so if you wanted to reapply, you would have, or if you wanted to be in consideration, you would need to reapply with each opening.
Okay, so we don't go back to the previous. I, I guess I have reason to believe that there may be other people interested in the Conservation Board and normally if we just have one, we would table it and give at least an opportunity because.
And I was notified by somebody that they had submitted one, but I think it was your case where it had expired. And so I had also received an inquiry about the Conservation Board. If you would not object, would you be opening, open to us tabling this to the new board since these are longer-term appointments?
Absolutely, there's, you guys still can do it or you want. There's two, no problem then.
I think that would maybe, if you want, we could review all the commissions and boards starting in January.
Pardon? How long has this been open?
It's not even open, yeah.
Yeah, it's a reappointment, it's a.
So it's, it's a reappointment?
So it's not expires until January, is correct?
And this was, it's, it's just been posted once?
Right.
Yes, and this was the, the one application. I did also receive notification that there has been interest, but they missed the deadline for the application.
So I will make a motion to table all the approval of the appointments.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to table.
Let's do these one at a time.
You would like to do it one at a time?
Yeah.
I will withdraw my motion. So the, I will amend my motion then or do a new motion basically to table the approval appointments for the Conservation Board? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to table the appointments of the Conservation Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that appointment is tabled. And so the next one is related to the Township Trustees and Clerks.
Here, I think that we need to take these people and put them on these boards as soon as possible because it's hard to get applicants for this. Let's, let's take what we got and, and be glad.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve all of, is there, there's none that are, there's more than, applied than what's available, right?
These are all reappointments.
Right. But we don't have any that there's more applied than what, okay, so I would make a motion to reappoint all of the people that have, that are on this list for the appropriate townships and positions. I'll second that before we vote.
Hey, we have a motion in a second, discussion?
Yes, I think under Dodge Township, I believe that's Thier, T-H-I-E-R, and it says there, T-H-E-I-R.
Because auto correct, they don't allow it.
Why, no, yeah, I mean, we can go in and undo the auto correct and get the spelling correct. So I guess I'd ask.
For the record.
For the record that we would correct the spelling of Mr. Thiers, T-H-I-E-R's last name, so it's spelled correctly. And was there another one that I had? I thought there was two of them.
I would just say we check the.
Yeah, let's check, check spelling on these, but we, we're going to be, they're going to be receiving.
Right, should be properly spelled.
Yeah, okay, that was my point.
Okay, so I think we have a, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, the Township Trustees and Clerks are approved. And the next approval appointments is the Board of Health, which looks like we have a Dr. Peckash.
So has this been, this is a reappointment also? And this was the first application or the only application that we received for this?
Yes, for each of these, whatever applications we received are on the agenda. So for each of these, Sunny Crest, the Board of Health and Conservation.
Has the period expired for this one also?
Yes.
Here, I think we should just take this, she's, she's been on the board for a while, hasn't she?
I don't know the duration, but it is a reappointment, she currently serves.
And it's, she's, so I would make a motion to approve Valerie Peckash to reappoint for the Board of Health.
I will second that, I'm comfortable with that. We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Up the number of people on this board.
We did.
Correct also.
Yep. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I think we had that, okay, thank you. The next is the Sunny Crest Advisory Board of Directors. And that's Jean Mauser.
Yeah, Jean's been on this board since the inception of it and she's been a very good member, very active, and her brother lives there. So I, I think that she's a good fit for this board. I, I would like to see her remain on it if it's your will to do so. Oh, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Jean also. I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to reappoint, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
But we do have another opening on that board, right? It looks like.
If we go further, that's our next on our agenda, open vacancies. Maybe we can look at that, so for boards and commissions. Nah, no problem, let's take a look. And so is that one of the vacancies that we have?
Yes, number 11.
Is it number nine, 10, 11, Sunny Crest, notice of two vacancies and so we just filled one, is that right?
That is correct.
And the two is related to the posting, not the numbers, is that correct? Or?
That is the second notice.
The second notice, I always get confused by the number of vacancies versus the posting. So there's one that would be revised to one, okay. Okay, everybody okay on vacancies, boards and commissions?
Yeah.
Good, okay. I think we're back to personnel requisitions now. So we have personnel requisition for Environmental Service Supervisor at Sunny Crest.
Anything on this, Dawn?
Nope, there's no issue with this one.
Okay. Motion to approve the Environmental Services Supervisor at Sunny Crest Manor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next personnel requisition is the Facilities Maintenance Intern.
Again, this was one that we also have a student that we've identified with interest. It's a student from Lawrence who is in, who is majoring in engineering. This is something that this department has actively, they've had an active intern program for several years, so this is in his part-time budget for this year.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, position is approved. The next personnel requisition is for the Deputy Sheriff for the jail at the Sheriff's Office, a permanent full-time Deputy Sheriff. Dawn?
So this one is the, the sheriff had received a letter giving notice that one of his deputies has applied for a job in another state and is going through that background process, which is usually a lengthy process, but his intent or his expectation is he will pass that and his intent is then to resign from the Dubuque County Sheriff's Department to accept that position. So this is a conditional, I guess, approval of this position. It'll only occur if the, if the sheriff's deputy does resign and he, in his letter.
I've got some firsthand information.
Yeah, it would be very soon.
Deputy in question is a good friend of my son's and I was, I was used as a reference and was interviewed and he's going to get this job, so it's, it's going to happen.
We'll need to replace him, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the requisition.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the personnel requisition, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Table and pending items, that resolution for deputies and clerks, is that what we need to work on? 7A, resolution to approve the appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks now should be in order. And so those three positions, I believe. See how good my memory is. Three positions, yes, one for the maintenance intern, food service worker, and park ranger.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, resolution is approved. Is that the only tabled item, Mary, that we're going to address today most likely? Okay, so now we're at public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board in which matters they are concerned to that person, which are not on the agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address, make your comments. However, no formal action on your comments may be taken at this time because of the notice requirements.
Motion recessed for five minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a sec, a second to recess for five minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are in recess. Thank you.